Most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for another day that you've given us. Dear Lord, thank you for all the many blessings you give us each and every day. Dear Lord, blessed this meeting, all that are attended here today, help us make the decision that we please continue. Dear Lord, be with us safe and let us fortunate. God's only value, damn upright, amen.
Mr. Roberts?
I'm ready.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir, I'm ready for you.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks to Supervisor for inviting me here today. Thanks to the board for making Whitney give me the opportunity to show support for the resolution. I'm Robert McDowell, and I'm the President of Union County. If the resolution is approved by this board, it would declare Union County the Second Amendment Sanctuary for the citizens of Union County and their Second Amendment rights. The resolution started in the state of Virginia and has spread all over the country. Representative Dana Criswell of Mississippi's 6th District in Norfolk, Mississippi, has taken up the task to get Mississippi counties on board with this resolution. Representative Criswell answered the call to patriots all over the country to stand with the citizens of Virginia and show support for their fight against their governor's actions to ban private ownership of guns. The citizens of Virginia in their stand for their Second Amendment rights began by declaring their counties as Second Amendment Sanctuary Counties. A total of ninety-one counties in Virginia have established themselves as Sanctuary Counties for the Second Amendment. Hence, the movement for the Second Amendment Sanctuary Counties was born. The movement has reached Mississippi, and Representative Criswell drafted the resolution that you have received. I presume the board members have received it. It has passed in DeSoto County. It has since passed in Alcorn, Tishomingo, and Lawrence County. It has been introduced, or will shortly be introduced, to Lee, Stone, Prentice, Pinola, Madison, Rankin, George, and today are here in Union County. The Second Amendment Sanctuary County will resolve to refuse to enforce any unconstitutional law that attempts to confiscate or disarm law-abiding citizens. It will refuse to spend any of your tax dollars confiscating firearms from law-abiding citizens. It will pledge to use all means available to defend citizens and law enforcement officers who refuse to abide by any unconstitutional gun confiscation laws. You may not think that our Second Amendment rights are under attack in Mississippi, but this year, two senators in Jackson, Mississippi have introduced Senate Bill 2055 to declare Mississippi to be a red flag state. Fortunately, that bill has been squashed. Speaking for gun owners in Union County, I encourage you to approve this resolution and validate it with your signature, declaring Union County to be a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. That's really all the comments I have. I'll try to answer any questions if you have any.
That's more or less saying, you know, that if we have guns, they can come over and get them, right?
Say again, please.
If you own guns yourself, that the government can't come and get our guns. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's just upholding the Second Amendment.
It's a show of, it's a symbolic show of support that's going to spread all across the country to essentially let the government know that we stand together, and we stand for the Constitution, and it's a line in the sand.
Y'all heard the man.
I make a motion that we approve to sign that resolution.
All in favor? Motion here.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I want to thank each one of you personally that's done the right thing. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert.
All right, moving to number two. Approval of consent agenda, all the finishers of the government office. Ms. Tammer, you just called.
Right, why are you?
And I've looked at the claims.
And I've looked at the medical records.
Sheriff, be careful seeing the thing.
I didn't see it.
I saw you borrow it.
He was in here, he walked out.
Baron?
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to prove them anyway, I don't like saying what it is.
It's done, it's done, spin it now.
But if it gets high, we need to make something better. We don't have somebody, we can agree this with how you'd be.
That's okay, Jim.
What do you want to prove?
That's okay, we're going to prove this.
He was sitting there.
She was sitting there.
That's right.
It's done now, it's three four looks of what.
See it right there?
Not bad. Two seventeen.
I make a motion.
Look at my chair, second was Steve.
Randy? You want to listen, Phil? Randy? You can okay?
Yes, sir. He won't sit here and listen all that. He got money, but I'm sure.
Good morning, I'm Scott Carroll, Copyright, and I thank you for the opportunity to present my proposal to upgrade the copier into jail. The cover sheet makes it pretty simple to follow along. The existing copier is an MX-2610, it's a colored copy, twenty-six pages a minute. The current monthly payment, I mean, it's a hundred and fifty-five dollars a month. My proposed machine is a MX-3051, thirty-page a minute machine. If we do not add the fax tray, it would be seventy-eight dollars and sixty-two cents a month. As you can see, that's a monthly savings of seventy-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Yearly savings of nine hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents. And for forty-eight months, which will be the term of the rental, is thirty-six hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. If you add the fax tray and the fax kit, and I added it in case they needed one, I think there's one layer, it may be several years old, you may not need it now, but this is featured, it can be added to the copier. If you did that, the monthly rental with the fax and the fax tray would be ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents versus the current hundred and fifty-five dollars. The monthly savings would be sixty-two, seventy-nine. Yearly savings, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-eight cents, and the forty-eight month rental savings would be three thousand, thirteen dollars and ninety-two cents. The current service contract on the existing copier is point oh one three oh cents per copy, which is basically one and a third cents. The new copier, because it's more efficient, and as we move along with technology, the cost to operate it is cheaper, so we go less than a cent a page at point zero zero nine eight per copy. The current copier costs point oh six two cents, or just a little over six cents a copy to produce a colored copy. The new machine will be under point oh nine eight per copy. If you chose to buy the machine versus doing a rental, purchase price without the fax and fax tray would be thirty-four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents, or if you add the fax and fax tray, it would be thirty-nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. And the service contract will remain the same at point zero zero nine eight for black and white, and point zero five eight for color. To turn to the next page, that is the rental that I kind of have already gone over. If you notice at the top, it says it's forty-eight month state contract rental. I have the contract number, I have the issue date of that contract, which was May of 2019. I've got the rate for each piece of equipment that's on the copier, and that's how we get the seventy-eight dollars and sixty-two cents a month. If you add the optional fax kit and fax tray, you add the eleven forty-eight to eleven, and that's how you get to the ninety-two, twenty-one. On a rental, we cannot rent the supply kit, supply kit consisting of the developer and the four toners it takes to operate a colored copier. So there would have to be a separate PO with four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents issued to cover that supply kit. Again, at the bottom, I've stated the cost to operate the copier for the service contract. Under the service contract, it's an all-in-one contract. The only thing that the county or the jail will be having to tackle will be the paper. So if we have any service issues with the copier under the contract, we're responsible for providing the service tech parts. If it's simply a jam, we send it out, help them get that out. If something breaks on the copier, we're responsible for all the parts under the contract. On the second page would be if you decided to purchase the copier. Again, I've got it listed out, but we've got the main copier, and then you have the accessories. Thirty-four, twenty-six without the fax kit, and it'd be thirty-nine, thirty-five with the fax kit and the fax tray. Again, the service charge per copy would be the same. On the next page, I've gone through and highlighted, for instance, on the first page, MX-3051, that's the same machine on that page. If you notice, the purchase price is twenty-four, thirty-seven. That matches what's on my sheet. Or if you rented it for forty-eight months, it's sixty-five dollars and four cents a month. You can go on and look at the numbers. I'm saying we brought this to show you that it is out of the Mississippi State Contract for the year 2019, twenty. The old copier was twenty-six pages a minute, I propose the thirty-page a minute, give them a little bit more speed. Now, let's go to the very last page. Very last page is a three-year warranty from the factory against defects in the equipment. So if we had a copier that you got from us, and we could have repaired it, or if we had excessive repairs on it, we could use this document to replace the machine. Any questions?
That's the, not the one in the jail, that's the one up in front.
Yes, sir. Actually, it's been there.
Not one of each.
Yes, sir. This copier that I propose to replace has been there since 2012.
And the fax machine is in the dispatch center, so I don't think we need it.
Well, y'all can do it.
Whatever saves money.
Well, it sounds like it's saved money. So is the contract up on the one you got?
Yes, sir. Actually, the machine could have been replaced earlier.
Just two years, it could have been replaced a little down there.
Anyway, it's been there since 2012. The obvious thing is that maybe the machine is still working. The problem is, is that you're paying a hundred and fifty-five dollars a month, and you can reduce that by quite a bit. Or you can even reduce it more if you choose to purchase the machine, but anyway.
What seems to work better than recent, or the purchase, for y'all?
All we do is use it, and you, that was ours to sell. All we do is...
Just a gamble, I mean, you know, if we lease it, you know, you've got to keep it up. If you purchase it...
It's a purchase, purchase or the rental on a service contract, we're responsible to keep the machine up, keep it working, and make the guys happy that it's performing. So, either way, either way, we're going to take care of you.
What's the difference in renting it? And then it's hard money back.
Well, if you take, let's say, you would take the...
I'll plug your number there.
Yeah, seventy-eight, I'm sorry.
Yes, one I don't need to bag.
I should have calculated it for you guys, but it was such a glaring difference between a hundred and fifty-five and seventy-eight dollars, or a hundred and fifty-five and ninety-two, that I think you'd take...
Two hundred and forty dollars more.
Two lots of light ones, you think most of the copier...
Maybe one's a rental, but...
Kind of life together.
I believe he said two hundred and forty-something dollars more to rent than what it'd be to buy.
Over four years.
What'd you say, over four years?
Over four years.
And then you would still have a machine, ladies and gentlemen, you still have a machine if you purchased it. It's good for more than four years. It's obvious that they last longer than that, because you've had one in there since 2012, so it's eight years old.
We real sound like...
Here, did we buy one of them there?
Well, no, you're good folks.
I mean, that's two months.
I think you better all be back.
I would think so, y'all.
But are they going to have a boat on out in four years when we lease for half the money again?
Well, it took twelve years to get here now, not four. I'm sorry, from twelve.
Let me ask you this, so if we buy, and we get ready in four years to upgrade again, you going to give us some money back on that?
No.
There's the one we, we need to buy them for, you can get some twelve years out of them, so if you get a hundred and twelve years out of it, you're way ahead of buying.
And you've been using this for twelve years.
I'm sorry, I said twelve, we got it in twelve, it's eight years. I apologize.
But it's still working okay, we're just paying too much money.
You're just paying too much money, folks, way too much money.
Who'd we rent from?
Be ready to come to us, sir. Let's think about something, let's think about something, one second. I sold big screen TVs. Big screen TVs have gone from five and six thousand dollars in the early 2000s, what, a thousand bucks?
Yeah.
Now, copiers have come down. They haven't gone quite as crazy as big screen television, but it's still an electronic device, so it has come down in price. And actually, they do more now, every year they add more features, so you get more money...
Boy, now we're renting, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We're saying it falls down.
So you can buy a machine for, how much money is it going to be?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
I think y'all backed.
That's without the fax, for thirty-four, twenty-six.
We're still paying rental, that.
It's not been long, but...
And if you buy, that thirty-four, twenty-six fifty includes the four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents supply kit. On the rental, you still have this, you pay...
Thank the one in the jail, y'all, we bought it, didn't we?
Yes, sir, you did.
Randy, how much you want to buy it? Chad made a motion to buy it. Please, second, all in favor? Motion here.
Yeah, if you buy it and you pay rent on it, three and a half years' time, you'd have to pay four anyway if you paid rent on it, so...
Thank you.
That's just some...
Thanks for your time.
Without a calculator doing the cipher in there.
And me.
I'll take care, have a good day.
Thank you. You want to be all that now?
Are you?
He's going to pay for it, isn't he?
Can he, yeah?
He'll have it.
You would get my paper, you can get your PO, and all that, sir. You appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number three. Approval of disallowance on claims, zero zero one four eight seven, amount of thirty-three thousand one sixty-four seventy-two, stay bill, clerical error, and approved manual checks, stay bill, amount of twenty-four thousand six thirty-seven eight six. Someone explain that to me. CJ?
Do what?
Allowance and the clerical error, number three, one all is there.
Oh, that one, Nancy turned the invert, was the draw in on that contract. She had termed it in for thirty-three one sixty-four.
Okay, I hear Martin down.
Yep, and once Amanda had plugged the claim docket out, we realized that it should be twenty-four six thirty-seven eighty-six, so we're just, you need to disallow that. We're doing a manual check on it, coming down there for that.
Motion to approve. Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of Chancellor Clark as county treasurer to consolidate two general fund checking accounts into one account to be held at BNA Bank. This also goes along with the fact we took under advisement, last two weeks ago, all of our bits on our county depositories, we're taking it coming out under advisement, and we're going to accept all three banks on that. We're just moving our checking account, we had it two different places, we're putting it all in one place, because it's a lot of trouble for the county, all the different departments, to try to use two banks on the checking account, so it makes life a lot easier for the county to put it in one place.
I make that motion.
Motion by CJ. Second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here. All right, the Emergency EMR Association has some new bylaws that they want to approve. We want all of our fire chiefs and all of our volunteer fire departments to be able to look at them, and they haven't, so we're going to take this under advisement until their, until our next meeting, to give them an opportunity to look at them.
I think Randy, that'll probably be in your March meeting.
That'll probably be in your March meeting. That's fine, of course, the market is...
Because they're just now going to be able to look at them, and some of the departments have done, had their meetings, so it's probably closer to the first of March.
That's fine, we want everybody to be on the same page with... We need a motion to approve that.
Make a motion to go under advisement.
Motion by Steve. Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion here. All right, we're going to have a sale of a lot of surplus equipment that we've got, and I think some impounded items and whatever, Sheriff's Department on March the seventh. It's like number six, if it is declared specific county equipment, and Road Department maintenance, and Sheriff's Department, that surplus property, be sold. Motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Motion by Chad. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion here. All right, we're going to have a sale of a lot of surplus equipment that we've got, and I think some impounded items and whatever, Sheriff's Department on March the seventh. It's like this number six, if it is declared specific county equipment, and Road Department maintenance, and Sheriff's Department, that surplus property, be sold. Motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Motion by Chad. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion here. All right, we're going to have a sale of a lot of surplus equipment that we've got, and I think some impounded items and whatever, Sheriff's Department on March the seventh. It's like this number six, if it is declared specific county equipment, and Road Department maintenance, and Sheriff's Department, that surplus property, be sold. Motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Motion by Chad. Second by Steve. All in favor? And this number seven also refers to that approval, approval of agreement including fees and who pays fee for Mid-South Auction, held auction to sell specific county equipment on March seventh at nine AM at the Union County Fairgrounds. What that is, is there's a percentage charged on the items that are sold, we've got to decide how much the buyer, buyer is going to pay, and how much seller is going to pay. So we're probably going to split that amount, so it won't be so hard on one person.
Split between the buyer and seller?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve. Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here.
He's supposed to be bringing it, I thought he was going to be here, but...
He is here.
They were open.
They opened, yeah. I mean, he's supposed to be at the meeting.
Yep.
Yeah. I thought him and Scotty were siding.
I wonder why.
Hey, let's tell you under advisement.
All right, so when will we meet again?
On the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, she is the eighteenth.
Since the eighteenth, it's when we meet next.
We do have to run this on a...
Well, you've got to advertise.
Auctions at March, you just want to have them done. It's in March, y'all.
Him and Scotty were working that out on that.
March the seventh, what?
We won't have time to advertise.
Do we need something, we need something from them? I mean, him and Scotty are working that out over there now.
We're on the buyer of the equipment for the trial and...
Well, we've made it all surplus, so we're at the sale, so what do we need that we don't have?
Well, you're going to have to advertise, and if we're doing this on March seventh, you won't have time to advertise if you wait till the eighteenth to make the decision.
True, I mean, yeah, we made the decision on doing it, anyway.
We just don't want to roll fail.
Okay.
We're just to approve the fee, we're going to advertise the assignment.
I mean, we proved everything.
Just to prove, just to prove having the auction on March seventh, and then just...
We're going to approve the fee schedule.
On the eighteenth. Okay, that's a, yes.
Because they're working on the term, hundred dollars worth of stuff.
Right, because the fee, the percentage is going to be according to how much equipment you got to sell.
So, on this agreement, we're just going to take it under advisement, the agreement, until eighteen.
We don't really want to do that, either, because you need to go ahead and start advertising.
We're sure, we're sure. 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 We're sure.
Right, because the fee, the percentage is going to be according to how much equipment you got to sell.
So, on this agreement, we're just going to take it under advisement, the agreement, until eighteen.
We don't really want to do that, either, because you need to go ahead and start advertising.
We're sure, we're sure. 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 We're sure.
Right, six percent is the percent, so I don't see why we need to take it under advisement, to be honest with you. I'm confused. There he is.
We've got to have a letter of credit, but he's got the letter of credit, I think, or getting it.
We'll get that for you, it's, we have to do it on a per basis, and we need to know what, how much y'all want it for, and all that. We usually get a, just give a reliable letter of credit, it's cheaper than a surety bond, and we have to do it for each entity, or for the state or whatever.
So that was talking about either approving all this, or taking it under advisement, finishing it up on the eighteenth, but y'all probably need to go ahead and... So, that was talking about either approving all this or taking it under advisement, finishing it up on the eighteenth, but y'all probably need to go ahead and get this done, where y'all could be able to have it going, don't you?
That, that's what we were talking about, we, we're, we're setting on go, and we're just.
So, what do we need to do?
On the fee, yeah, like on the fee, y'all had to, they had to determine the fee, uh, negotiated with y'all on the fee, what are, what are y'all looking at on that?
That's what you and Scotty were discussing a little bit ago.
Right, yeah, normally, we, it, it, everybody else will pay ten and seven percent, and, and normally what we usually do with, uh, with our, our core group of folks that we work with, we charge a flat six percent. Uh, and, and we work it one of two ways. Which, at, at ourselves, we charge the buyer a, 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 a small percentage as a, as a buyer's fee, and then we cap it, that covers our advertising. Uh, or we can charge y'all advertising, we found it's better, just let them do that, and, and you don't have to have an advertising fee and all that. So, that, that's worked well for us in the past, we've been doing it for years, we did it on the last sale, so, you know. You know, if that's okay with everybody, we'll just continue.
So, we will pay the six percent fee, is what you're saying?
That'll be deducted out of the proceeds, y'all won't have to pay your own upfront, you know, this is, that, that just, uh, that's, that's.
So, the buy, buyer won't pay nothing then?
They're talking about a one percent.
Well, no, we, we, normally what we do, we, we charge a ten percent buyer's fee, and we cap it at fifty dollars. And that's worked well, because if, if somebody's spending, you know, thirty thousand dollars on something, and you charge them one percent, that's three hundred dollars. And, and they deal with sideways with that, so that way it's only fifty dollars, and, and like I said, that covers our advertising, and our, so it costs, uh, the, the six percent is kinda how, what we get paid, and, and, and it just costs you a bit, save money, so.
So, what else we need, Jerry?
You, you just need to approve the agreement. Uh-huh, y'all satisfied with the six percent?
Fee was there?
That's seller.
Pay it.
Need them all to approve?
Well, you gotta be the same, I did agree with that, so they're still agreeing with that.
You want?
I want that vote.
He, he made a question.
I made a motion, Sam, say, you need it, all in favor?
All in favor? Motion here. Solid, approve.
Can I ask a question, and, and it may, it still involved me too, uh, we had talked about doing the gun sale on, on Friday night, versus Saturday. We, we gotta come to kind, that made me speak something that, that, we need to get with the, on Sheriff's Department to decide, but it's, we, we need to decide that, there's some pros and cons both ways, and, and, you know, it, it, we don't necessarily have to make that decision now unless. I don't know how y'all's meetings go, so that's really hard to do now.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be something, y'all have to decide.
Okay.
If, when you wanna sell your guns, if you wanna do it on Friday or you're gonna do it on Saturday, we gotta actually approve that day, or we approve to have the sale.
I don't know, what do you think?
Well, there's some pros and cons both ways to it, Mr. Jimmy, uh, one thing about it, um, it's gonna take us about three hours to sell those guns. Uh, if you start first thing in the morning, on a Saturday morning, that means it's gonna be three hours before we can get on to any equipment. In the past, I've seen people get a little frustrated with having to wait three hours before we get on equipment. Then, if we hold the guns and start them at twelve o'clock, then people get tired, and they will start wanting to go home about two, so we're going, so, it's, 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 it's. And two, we gotta get them approved and all that, because we're gonna get one of the, the, uh, gun dealers here to, to approve all the guns and things, so that's gonna be a whole another thing that's gotta be involved. So, it's gonna be a good bit of paperwork, give them a, a good bit of process to make all of that happen, so, you know. Uh, but if we don't have to make that decision now, we, we got, you know, two or three days if we can talk about it, cause we wanna do what y'all wants to do, uh, you know, it's.
Y'all is getting so much money, we're rounding up, and when you got guns, and then you got cars.
So, you want, you say.
I got three different people, I got a baby, I don't even mind.
And then the sale, I'm saying. Yeah, and, and all of. The guns at like eight morning, and from eight o'clock to eleven o'clock, and maybe put in your, your advertisement, or start a gun today, we're.
Twelve, we're supposed to split.
Lunchtime.
Problem.
If you did that, you wouldn't have people coming to lunch.
Not suppose, this, this, like guns, you're gonna come just to go and do it, like coming to buy a gun.
Yeah, that's, and two, a lot of your gun dealers, they're not gonna come on Saturday, cause they wanna be at their shop.
They don't wanna buy a gun and put in the dump truck if they're in the mountains there.
So, we have found, we can, that guns take care of themselves, you, you actually got two different groups of people that's, and two, most of these guns are gonna sell local, they're gonna sell right here in the county. And, and most folks, they don't mind to come Friday night, come back Saturday, it, it actually, one of the best gun sales we ever had was in Miami, I mean, uh, so that. Personally, I think it would be better do it on Friday night, but we're open to doing it whenever, it, it, it's not, it's not, it's not something, no, it's, it's not something that's gonna be.
But you're broke. From y'all figure.
Okay, so, we can decide that later, man.
They don't have any, they market, they don't show that weekend, or they.
Not that I know of.
But us find out, and then we'll follow back, we'll, we wanna make this thing as much money as we can, but it's, it's pretty hard.
We do too, we broke.
We do.
So, but like he said, you know, you got, and we're, we're gonna be chasing down car dealers for you guys, and chasing down gun folks, people looking for a green tractor, and a, a, a dump truck guy, a garbage truck guy, you know, so. We got our work cut out for us, but we do know the psychology side of an auction, and you bring all them people in at one time, and then all these people gotta wait, they get, well, I wanna go to Lowe's and do this, so.
At the end of the sale, if you don't watch it, you still have to go, chief.
And so, well.
They either tired and left, or, and most times they don't spend out money.
They're the game, you're right, and we're thinking we can eliminate the game if we go Friday, and, and go Saturday, but, uh, just thought, you know.
But anyway, what, I guess now, and this, the next question is, we, we brought a contract with us, do, do y'all wanna do that today, or, or do we need to do it another day, or, or what do we need to do?
We put it on the agenda for today, but what do y'all think?
We did, I mean, we can sign for that part, we can, and that can have it done.
Chad's not here, but, uh.
Yeah, our board attorney's not here, can, can you leave with us, let him look at it, make sure it's all cool, and then we can.
Yeah, we'll, uh, but if you want to, we'll go back over and, and fill out everything that we've talked about, and, and then we'll leave it with y'all.
Each feedback letter.
You can pass it based on his, uh, review.
Yeah, we want him to look at it.
I, I want him to, too, cause I'm, you know, that's, so, we, we like everything to be done in the first, not, not having a review.
We'll leave that with Mr. Amanda, does that work?
Okay, okay.
Okay.
We'll be, we'll be over there for a few minutes, y'all.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank y'all. All right, number eight. Well, do we need to? Okay. What we just did? Approval of request for cash for A R C and T V A grants from Martin Town Industrial Access Road Project, A R C M X one nine two four seven. And to authorize inter fund loan from the General Fund and Martin Town Industrial Fund, just pay the receivables, and that's four thousand. We done done that, we know, that's a different one, just like it, I get it.
We have.
Yeah. Twenty-four thousand to seventeen thousand. Different to seven thousand three ninety-one dollars. That's all they changed order stuff, exactly.
Yeah, that, uh, that is, uh, we're just requesting money for the grants, seventeen two forty-six from T V A, and seven thousand three ninety-one from A R C. That's to get our money, and we're gonna, we want to do an inter fund loan until that grant money comes in.
You just thanks, twenty-one dollars.
I make a motion.
Motion by Chad.
I'll say it.
Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion here.
Sign, I put a blue X, I bring you to sign.
Blue X.
You got four.
I'll say the two blue X's. Hey, I messed that up already. Day, third and second.
Day's third.
Second. Have you read it, you signed?
I get one right here.
I put it, pre, pre see the blue X, the day of the time, your time see the X.
I did, I sort of made that bird one up a little bit.
On that second page, don't they?
It's okay.
Look on that second page, you feel that, Ross.
Oh, I guess I'll use the computer.
Three?
Yeah, I'll put mine.
That's three.
I'll put my scratch pad on here.
I did. Here's three hundred thousand, and eighty to sign. And daddy, I just do it for you.
Okay. Approval of contractor estimate for A R C M X Martin Town Access Road Project, number one two, one nine two four seven.
That's just simply the payment for the, uh, for the county engineer, we just have to sign our, um, the papers, and then we get paid.
Okay. Motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Second Chad, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here.
Would you like to sign these names?
I will.
I prefer the blue X, I think they're five documents.
Five places?
No, five, five.
I'll do it, I'll do that. Approval of request for cash for the C D V G water expansion grant. Authorize inter fund loan from General Fund to the C D V G, this is a water brand out there.
Three forty-eight.
Three forty-eight, that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve. Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion here. Next is approval of fire service contracts between Union County and ten volunteer fire departments, something we do, do every year.
Make a motion.
Up to Chad. Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here.
You got ten of them signed, if you wanna sign that, we can.
Ten of them signed. I'll, I'll put it right there, two others. Men Road Department budget to purchase pickup in amount of twenty-one dollars, one hundred twenty-one dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve. Second. Second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here. Now, this one here, I don't know what the, what is this place?
I, I know there, I saw Scotty's guy.
It's lifting lugs, it's just once for G N O supply, once for full to pipe, and construction, it just says it's galvanized metal, and it says it's two sets of lifting lugs.
Discuss codes for lifting lugs for road, I'd like to know what lugs, though.
I'm finding that. This is some kind of jack or something, I don't know what, I don't, I don't recall ever using any lugs like that, I love nuts on cars. What's this lifting lugs for the road department?
I'm giving five thousand, we're getting hooked. It's a pipe.
Okay, goes on the end of the new cover. Okay, are they metal for the big ones? Okay, will we handle that? Okay, all right, that's, okay, that's what I need, thank you, man, all right. They got some lifting lugs for one of these pipes, you know, they.
With the chain, too?
Yeah, I figured it out. I think they set there around six pound. They, just makes it easier to handle.
Fifty-six over the eleven pound dollar.
Come on there. Well, what, I want, I want to focus on them, I'm trying to figure out. Lifting lug, it's only something, probably.
No, it's gonna be like a clamp to go on the end of the pipe, it's a chain, too, or something.
How many is it? No, this, the pipe, there's one pipe here, cost eleven thousand one thirty-seven, lifting lug ain't a hundred thirty dollars.
Yeah, he said about six pound on the piece, what he said.
Yeah, yeah.
We get, well, it's on the pipe.
You get, that's a fifty foot long, twelve gauge pipe here on top. Let me look this next. Yeah, lifting lug, yeah, lifting lug is just them two at the bottom.
You just got two sets of them, yeah.
Uh, what size pipe?
It's a fifty foot pipe, that's fifty foot pipe, yeah.
But he's got quantity out there, what company, all, totally all, it's fifty, he's got fifty of them.
Fifty feet, so it's something you could take and clamp that bad with and take the back on pick up.
You might have to get quantity.
It is, it is, it's, it's, when you get them big ones, they aggravate. I just, I just did one last week, this week with chains, it was aggravating, I mean, well, we buy this, gonna be reused, or it just certain lump, certain pipe?
The lug, he's gonna weld the lugs on.
Right. Oh, that's what they.
What, 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 they all, it's got.
Change to them.
To empty out there.
Coming in and buy one.
Fifty of them.
And then it's charging.
That's not the right of your foot.
Well, you don't want eleven thousand on a pipe.
Yeah.
You know, and.
No, no lift, but I'm, I'm, I'm only buy, it needs to be. Who got to put it as low as the end of the quarter, G N O is eleven two sixty-seven, Horton is eleven thousand five fifteen.
Well, G N O, that's a low speed.
Got the lowest speed, what I'm talking about, the way he's got it listed right there, it's like. And there's the length, there's the length of the pipe, he's got quantity, fifty of them.
Right, he ought, he ought to have some quantity of one B C P, but.
That is my mistake, I thought he was right, right there, but that's not.
Yeah, two, three.
And there's the.
Next, two lugs cost six pound on the piece.
There's the one, and you've got quantity, also, fifty, ten of them, yeah.
All your goods, the loads.
Yeah. One oh, one oh one. So, G N O, G N O supply is your lowest speed by three, around three hundred dollars. Y'all wanna fit lowest speed?
Yes.
You like a location to fit G N O's flat?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Chad. Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion here. Boy, it should have had on there a, a pipe and lug to put in, well, we gotta work, we gotta work, too. Oh, I made the motion, CJ, second.
Did you just have them, Jim?
Yeah, I'm surprised.
I tell you, really, these places, you buy eleven thousand, like, I was like, well, you some lights on the corner, yeah. I mean, they all, so that's having to get them low on ourselves. Cause they all hard to handle, you need what, I mean, with the backhoe they are, trackhoe they leave.
Well, they ain't too easy, they ain't too easy with them trackhoe, eh?
That's why when he gets too out of check on, just they, they all furnish those things for us. Okay, approval of four inventory deletions from four or two vendors off. I guess someone's got that.
I do.
You do?
There are the, I, we got two iPhones and, well, they're all, three iPhones and one Samsung.
Okay.
They're both waiting.
Motion by CJ, second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here.
I'm just making a big stack, we decide, great.
Next, we have approval of Butch Cava's new firewall manager, it's gonna go into effect March the first. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second by Steve. Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of manual check for one thousand eight eighty-one ninety-five, payable with five fund or replenished funds for narcotics. Motion by Chad. Motion by Chad. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion here. You got some next you need to have something too. I do all the same. You got another? Okay, that's number seven, they was your approval of tags. Approval of manga check for the table Union County Access Road Project. Titles on four vehicles that were seized and transferred to the sheriff's department. Motion by Steve. Second by CJ. All in favor? Motion here. Collection commissioner's claim for, for what?
Five of them, I put four, I'm sorry.
Five of them?
Yeah, five, sorry. Yes.
You have those?
Yes.
Yeah, motion to approve. Motion by Chad. Second by Sam. All in favor? Motion here. I'll have to take it under advisement and I've seen approval of circuit, clerk, payments services as registered.
That'll be fine.
Steve, make a motion. I have second. Chad, second. Motion here. To this nine one dispatcher's current program, travel expense to dispatchers for search case?
Yes.
To nine one dispatcher's.
They're going to two.
One two. Shouldn't be too bad.
You know what it is?
What is that?
I got it over there in that aisle, scanned it in.
The motion to approve it's going. Motion by Sam. Second by CJ. All in favor? Motion here. Next is, uh, hiring Philip Little for second district, uh, road department.
Make a motion.
Motion by Chad. Second by Steve. All in favor? Motion here. Do I got it, Sam? Barry, here. Which spell?
Down, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So we need a motion to recess Tuesday, February the eighteenth. Motion by Chad. Second by CJ. All in favor?